Good afternoon, everybody. We're gonna call the work session of July 2nd, 2008 of the Salisbury City Council to order. Our first item on the agenda is the introduction of the John Deere Drive at Route 50 East Hobbs Road annexation. Mr. Holliday. And for the record, everyone, we have Council President Jack Heath is on the phone. You're still there, right, Jack?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
We've had another petition for annexation for John Deere Drive that's right on the corner when you turn off Hobbs Road. I'm sure we see all the American flags out there. It's approximately two, two and a half acre site. The petitioner's requested to get annexed. The purpose of the annexation, where are my notes? Okay. I have Brock Parker here from Parker Associates who's representing the petitioner. The petitioner's from DMS Development, which we have one of their principals here, sitting back there, David Schlockman. Yeah, this consisted two unimproved parcels. They're wanting to annex to develop to put a Wawa convenience store there. The city staff met several weeks ago with Mr. Parker and his clients to get input from city staff from water sewer, roads, state highway was there. Get input from everyone. And what I'll do, I'll just turn it over to Mr. Parker here. He can fill you in on the rest of details.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Bill. I'm not sure if you guys have received a copy of the annexation site plan in your packets?
Yes.
So, I don't want to regale you with a repetitive information, but basically, we're proposing your typical Wawa that you used to see in up and down 50 and on 13. It's a 5,600 square foot store with gas pumps, ample parking, just your typical Wawa. We've met with city staff, we've met with S H A, and we haven't really had any huge ambushes or real huge problems present themselves thus far. Stormwater's looking good, water and sewer's right at the site. I believe this property is under the terms of a pre-annexation agreement already. It's proposing to tie into the water and sewer lines that were extended all the way down to Woolworth. So, it's, I think it's a pretty, if anything, it's a rubber stamp. It is a rubber stamp. That's where I think we want the city to grow. That's where we've installed the water and sewer to get there. From a regional aspect, we've, you know, we're doing our stormwater regionally with the Timmar Association subdivision. We've also had some communications with the Shorebird Stadium and enhancing some of their frontages with some new signage, a new Gateway Memorial as you come in on 50. Those agreements are on paper and are in the process of getting signed. So, pending a successful conclusion to the annexation, we look forward to moving to construction as soon as we can get the plans approved. One question I have. John Deere Drive, is that current, that's a county road? Or is that just a service road on that property?
It's actually a state-maintained access road.
Okay. So, is that gonna stay state-maintained, or is that gonna be, okay. Amanda's nodding yes. Any other questions? Consent system moving forward?
After your approval, next step will be taking us to the August Planning Commission to get reassigned.
Okay. You have, Jack, are you good with this?
Yeah, that's fine.
So, you have unanimous consent?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for having us. All right. Thank you. Next up is Amanda Pollak for the Aaron Moore Special Assessment Resolution in Order. How you doing today?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This first item that I'm here to present on is the Aaron Moore Stormwater System Maintenance and Potential Special Tax Assessment. So, the Aaron Moore subdivision has experienced some flooding over some of the large rain events that we've had in the last couple of years. In an inspection that we performed in November 2016, which is a typical routine inspection, we did note some violations and maintenance needs that needed to be done. We sent that notice to the homeowners association and then ended up speaking to them early in the next year. They petitioned the city to seek help in performing some of those maintenance issues. So, this is something that is in accordance with the city code. We do have the ability to perform maintenance and then charge a special tax assessment and get reimbursed for that maintenance, if that's the path we wanna go. So, we did put together quotes. We worked on a scope of work. We've been in constant communication with the homeowners association in doing this. We had actually bid the work the first time in August of 2017, and we bid the work in its entirety, and it came in well over the budget of what they could spend initially. So, we talked to the contractors, worked with the HOA, and decided to phase some of the work and got it down to a first phase that would have good maintenance implementation and would show benefits to them, but is not the full scope of what needs to get done ultimately. So, we rebid this in April of this year, 2018. The low bid was still a little bit higher than their budget and what they wanted to spend initially, so we were able to negotiate with the low bidder on the scope of work to get the work into the price range that the HOA was looking at. So, ultimately, the first phase of the maintenance project would cost about $24,000, which is $158 per property in that neighborhood. There's 152 property owners. So, the means that we could do that is by issuing a special tax assessment one time, one year, for $158 for each of those properties, and then they would be reimbursing the city for that. So, this process would require a public hearing. So, today is the introduction at work session. If we move it forward past today, we would hold a public hearing. We would send a written notification to all the property owners. At this point, we've been working with the HOA, and there are representatives from the HOA here today if there's any questions. But going forward, we would send out a public notice and hold a public hearing at a legislative meeting if this is advanced.
Questions?
How much is it for them?
$158?
$158, one-time fee for this first phase of maintenance.
So, if they were going to try and, let me ask you a series of questions, and maybe they'll leave this on there. They wouldn't have been able to do this work themselves without some expertise from the city about what they needed out there?
So, they, they do have, I believe, a contractor that comes in and helps, a routine landscaping contractor, and he could do some of the work, some of the clearing and overgrowth. Our inspection report, and I attach it, identifies what's needed, and we often do go meet with HOAs or property owners to help them implement from those inspection reports, from that violation. So, it's not that you absolutely necessarily need the city's help. We're certainly here to provide help and guidance on that. There is some of the work that could be done by a landscaping contractor, but then there's more, I guess, invasive construction work that would be beyond their typical landscaper. So, it helped to bid it out and get a site contractor that has the proper heavy equipment to be able to dig out the ditches and do the maintenance.
What's the total for all of it again?
Well, the high range, when we bid the total project, the bids came in between $124,000 and $177,000. We felt like that was high. That was higher than what we were expecting them to come in. However, when we put out even the smaller scope, the low bid was in the $45,000 range, so it took some negotiating of that to get down to an affordable level. So, it's, this is something that the HOA will need to budget for going forward to keep maintenance as an ongoing, and that's typical throughout the city, is HOAs do need to budget and make sure that they have a budget in their, in their treasury to pay for ongoing maintenance. So, this is, this is really step one. This is the first phase of maintenance.
So, what's the plan for step two and beyond? Is this, again, are we expecting the city to do the same thing, or is this something that they're gonna have to do on their own? I mean, because obviously, we can't do this for every HOA in the city.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, this is a precedent that is, I think, the concern of members on the council.
Sure. We would like to have this be a first phase to get them started. Ultimately, we would like to see the HOA take it over and continue after that. So, this, as you said, this is not sustainable, something that we could do for all HOAs all the time. It would, it would be too cumbersome and timely to do so.
What's the, I guess, you know, one of the other, one question raised by a citizen, the liability for the work, if we're overseeing the work, technically, if we're paying the bill upfront.
Sure.
So, there's still some liability and all of that on the city. What is the concern there?
Yeah. So, there, there is that liability. It is our contractor. So, we are hiring the contractor. The contract would be with the city. It would fall under our typical contract specs, certificate of insurance, all of that would be with us. So, the liability during construction would fall towards the city. It would, it would be ours because it's our contractor.
Okay. Are they to have all this money before this takes place?
No. So, they would reimburse us. This $158 per property, we would get paid back. So, we would front this money, and it would come out of our stormwater utility, construction pot of money. We would front it and then get reimbursed through the taxes.
And the only problem I have with that, kind of like Mira, if we do this for one group of homeowners, then other homeowners are gonna expect us to do that for them, too. I mean, it's the only problem.
The, I guess, another question I have, I saw that there was a request initially to put it on the water and sewer bill, which would be the quickest way to get the money back.
Right.
But we're gonna put it on the tax bill. Would that be next year's tax bill, or?
We, we've asked that question. Olga's here to help answer that as well. We've asked the county if it could be on a special tax bill. We, it won't be on this first tax bill that goes out. It would have to be potentially a special bill because we still have to go through the entire process of the public hearings if we advance it. So, it would not be on the July 1 tax bill.
So, I guess maybe the question is, is there, is there a reason why we can't just use the water and sewer bill?
I think the way the code reads is it's a special tax assessment. That's, that's our framework to work under. That's why we ended up going this way, is it, we couldn't put a tax necessarily on the water and sewer bill. It's a special tax assessment. So, our reading of the code there is that it had to be on the tax bill.
Could you remind me, how many, how many households in the city of Salisbury would this be impacting?
Sure. It's 152 in this one neighborhood.
152. So, minimally 300 for, which constitutes what, 1% of our city population?
This is not a new problem for this neighborhood. Certainly, in the last 15 years, this has happened before where we've been asked to go in and clear, in order to make sure that all of the, all the drains were, I don't have any problem helping them. But I need to know, but let me ask, let me ask another question. There are several different parts of Aaron Moore, several different machinations of Aaron Moore. Is all of Aaron Moore in this, or is it just the older section? Is it the new section around the corner? Is it?
I believe this is all of it, yes.
Because what I'm deathly scared of, to be honest with you, is grocery shopping. Because it'll be somebody from the new section who doesn't have this problem, who didn't know about this problem before, who I'll be in the meat section of the ACME. And do we have something from the board of Aaron Moore that says that, that they are all in agreement?
We have a document from the homeowners association board, and then beyond that, we will be sending out the individual letters of notification if we move forward with this, so that everyone will be notified. So, at this point, we've just been communicating with the HOA board.
Then I am for it, and I do it with a smile on my face. But I do say this with a smile to all of you sitting out there from the neighborhood. The first question I get, I'm driving up to your house, and I'm gonna deposit them in front of you, because I will be in the store and I will get, I attend, because obviously, the most recognizable of all of us at this height and weight, you know what I mean?
That's fine with me.
Actually, I'll be in Walmart, and Mira will be working, and I will somehow try and move that person to Mr. Boda and be unsuccessful. But if, if, if we're pretty sure that, that everybody in there knows that this is, now's the time that we have to do it, then I think I could support it. What does Mr.?
Tillman?
Tillman. Yeah. Let's draw a blank.
That guy.
Any precedent problems? Any, I mean, certainly, we have done special taxing things for other neighborhoods.
Pete Golda actually reviewed this, and this has been done pursuant to his instructions.
Pete Golda, pursuant to his instructions.
So, he's, he has reviewed it and found it to be sufficient.
But, but in a way, sufficient for us and for them, but in a way that doesn't get us into any trouble going on down the road, or?
No. I, I mean, we have a procedure to follow, but if we follow it, then we've done what the law allows, basically.
And the total is 150?
158 per property. So, the total's $24,000, the contractor.
Let me ask this question, because I love Salisbury and I know it well. When one doesn't pay, or it's a non-homeowner occupied property, and the landlord, or it is, Salisbury, gotta list all of them, it's a landlord that's absentee and doesn't live here, and we cannot get ahold of that. In other neighborhood associations, with their groups, liens are put on properties for things, but if you have to put a lien on one, that's $150 that doesn't get collected until later.
That's true.
So, now, and I'm gonna say this, and please just stay with me, but Mr. Corddry, who is head of the finance department, will come up at budget time with a nice lady from a firm called Barbara Kane Thornton, who does our audit. She will sit here in front of us, and she will go to page 666B, and she'll say, now, this thing in Aaron Moore, the bond people wanna know, I mean, these are the, these, this is where this all goes to. If I had $150, I'd give you my part of it right now, and I don't even live in the neighborhood. But I need to be sure, Mira and Jack, that if there's somebody who doesn't pay, and we don't get up to the amount of money that we need, who's on the hook for what's left?
Well, I believe, well, first of all, I think, I think it ought to be acknowledged that you said Barbara Kane Thornton, right. Second of all, yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be on the hook for that on the front end, but there would be a lien against their property. And, you know, that could lead to-
But it doesn't make it so that if they don't collect all of it, we've gotta go back to Aaron Moore and say, we didn't collect all of it.
No.
We're still gonna-
That would be that individual property owner.
Now, see, that leads me back to your suggestion that there may be a problem later on when someone else says, we'd like you to do this, too.
Why can't they pay us regardless, and then their association put a lien on the property and be owed to their association?
Because they don't have the original $150 from that property.
Well, no, but they'll get money. The thing with these organized-
That's a sweet thing to say, but I'm not so sure that's always true.
-communities is they have a constant influx of income with their homeowner association fees.
Well, I think, Ms. Russell-
You're not that naive.
Yeah. I think you've identified that, I mean, the, the way this should work in an ideal situation is, the, the city of Salisbury should not be in any way engaged in the process. I mean, but there, when it comes to, we can't, you know, a neighborhood saying, we don't have the expertise, we need help, we can't get this done, there are two ways for the city to get involved. One, to just start fining them for their failures, or two, to be a vehicle to, to get, to bring in a contractor to help.
I agree with, I agree with helping them. I agree with helping them. I just don't understand how it is an individual property in a community that has a homeowner. Why aren't we making the arrangement with the homeowners association and building the homeowners association instead of the individuals? Is there any way we could do that? Because we could get the money from the homeowners association. Once we try to get the money from the individuals, then it creates sort of backlog paperwork for us.
Except when you go, except the, the city would have, they have, except they have no assets. Like, we wouldn't have anything to go after, but the individual has their home. That's the only thing that I could think of, is the, the homeowners association doesn't really have much of anything. You know what I mean?
But they, they always have income. Homeowners association always have income, or they cease to-
Just, just not real collateral. Yeah. I see, I mean, you're, you're totally right.
What's the total number of properties that would be assessed?
152.
This really is actually you, not me, so I apologize.
Sorry. I'm speaking vicariously.
At what point have we collected enough to move forward? Are we just gonna move forward and then hopefully?
No. We'll move forward first. We will front the money and then get reimbursed.
It's like a bonded project.
No.
No, no. It's like, I mean, it's like that in that we would move forward and pay it back.
Is there anything that guarantees with the work that's going to be done that future council doesn't, that it doesn't, I mean, you can't guarantee it's not gonna come back again, or that the fix isn't gonna work, but is what we're doing so much more comprehensive than what has been done, that it should open up everything around it? Because you're, you're explaining that it's above their landscaper, but sort of below what we do besides going out and doing the check.
Right.
So, is it a backhoe? Is it, is it, are there collapsed pipes? Is it connecting? I know there's the little things, that's the little grid back there. I've seen it all.
Yeah. I believe it's primarily ditch maintenance, so I don't think there's any paperwork involved. It's ditch maintenance, so it's excavator backhoe type.
So, this is essentially a ditch tax.
I think so.
Willis has one. They tax the ditch. Everybody complains because they never do any work, but.
We're gonna do the work first and then tax the work.
That's what those freedom-loving people that, old Nate Sanson was part of.
Mr. Heath, do you have anything to add to this?
They're good at branding these things.
Jack?
Yeah?
Have you got anything to add to this?
Uh, no. I think, I think that's what it said.
Okay. Are you okay with moving forward on this? Everybody good with, okay. So, I mean, we're gonna proceed, but I guess I, I can send a message that, you know, going forward, you know, y'all need to make sure you take care of this. And to every other homeowners association out there, we simply can't, you know, do this for everybody, and it's a message that, you know, make sure you got the funds in case you need to take care of major projects like this. So, that's just, just saying.
Yes.
All right.
And we inspect every three years, so we're, we're around at each of the stormwater facilities every three years to give notices. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, it's Ms. Pollak again. This is illicit discharge detection and elimination policy.
Yes, that's a mouthful.
We went from ditch to illicit discharge. Here we go.
Okay. So, one of my favorite topics, illicit discharge detection and elimination, IDDE. That's why we call it IDDE. So, this is part of our overall stormwater MS4 permit, which is our municipal separate storm sewer system permit that we have through the state of Maryland. And this year, the new MS4 permits have, have been issued. We've been talking for many years that our new permit was coming out, and it's out now. An illicit discharge detection elimination program has always been a part of our permit, but now specifically, the permit states that we need to adopt an ordinance or other regulatory means that prohibits illicit discharges into our storm drains. So, that's any illegal dumping of any sort. And we've, we've made up a fact sheet that was in your package, and we've put this on the website, and I think this is kind of the easiest way to, to look at this. Illegal discharges are anyone that's dumping paint, petroleum, yard waste, laundry water, pet waste, sanitary stuff, or anything like that down a storm drain is an illicit discharge. So, this is actually providing an ordinance to codify that it's illegal. And surprisingly enough, we really didn't have anything like this. You know, our first stop was, okay, what do we have in the code that makes it illegal to dump in our storm drain? And, and we didn't really find anything with good teeth. Our permit also requires that we establish a legal means for gaining access to a property when we think there is an illicit discharge. So, that's also part of what we've written in this ordinance, is, you know, making every attempt to contact the property owner, but then in the event where we think there's an illicit discharge, we're able to go on a property to identify it. So, we, we do find illicit discharges, actually, with some frequency. We've had issues of grease being dumped down drains. We'll see evidence of antifreeze, and so we'll, we'll see an illicit discharge and then try to track it back to its source. So, these do happen. I do wanna note things that are allowable discharges. While we're talking about what's illegal, there's still things that are legal, like water line flushing. When we flush our hydrants, we get a separate permit for that, and that is legal to go in the storm drain. Firefighting water, as you can imagine, is legal to go in the storm drain. Lawn watering and irrigation watering, if it's running off from someone's property, that's not something where we're gonna go find them for that. That's legal. Individual residential vehicle washing. So, if you're at your house and you're washing your car, and that runs off down your driveway and into a storm drain, that's legal. However, a commercial car wash, it's not legal, you know, when it's a larger commercial facility. There's regulations from the state to dechlorinate swimming pool discharge water, and if it's properly dechlorinated, it can also go down a storm drain. As well as when we drain, drain our municipal water tanks, we dechlorinate that when we're draining tanks. So, those are things that are legal. So, we, we have had a program for some years. We have standard operating procedures on how we are looking for illicit discharges, and our primary way is with our outfall inspections. So, we're required by our permit to inspect all of our storm drain outfalls each year. We have to do 20% of our outfalls every year. You have to do it on dry weather days, so at least three days after a rain event. So, if you're looking at an outfall, and it hasn't rained for at least three days, and there's water coming out of it, it's likely an illicit discharge. So, we'll start testing it. First, you look at, is it chlorinated? You know, is, is it somehow coming from a water system? If not, is there soap in it? So, you start testing, you start eliminating. It, it might be this, it might be that. And then you start tracking it back. You go to the next manhole, you go up beyond that. Sometimes there's odor, sometimes there's a visual, you know, if there's a sheen like a petroleum. So, we do that now anyway. We inspect outfalls, we have procedures in place. This puts it in the code so that then if, if someone is found dumping, we can actually find them, we can have enforcement action. If someone, say, had, had, I don't even know, you know, an industrial waste, a line connected right to our storm drain or something, we could actually make them have a compliance order and fall into compliance. So, right now, we really don't have that. When we find illicit discharges, we go work with that property owner or that person and tell them why it's wrong and talk about what they need to do, but we don't have any enforcement action. So, this section of what we wrote up was modeled after our pre-treatment enforcement action. So, this came out of other sections of the code, and we modified it, as well as there's the ability for anyone to appeal an enforcement action. But this goes through, essentially, it's almost like progressive discipline. You know, there's, there's lower level steps. We'll notify you of the violation. If you don't stop, we'll go to a compliance order, cease and desist. But essentially, this is keeping our, our waterways clean. It's important to have this. We've been on the lookout for illicit discharges for, for many years anyway, but this really puts it in our code and makes it very, very clear what's legal and what's not.
Any questions? Jack, do you have any? Everybody good with moving forward?
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So, the next item on our agenda is the West Side Truck Traffic Discussion. I don't have a name on it. I just got a-
It's me.
Oh.
It's me. I've had quite a few residents on West Main Street and on Parsons Road complaining about tractor trailers coming through that community, to the point where they've torn down wires from houses. The roads are impaired, and I do know for myself that I've seen them come through. On Parsons Road, I have a problem, and it's Allen Brothers, and which I respect that business to the utmost, but it impairs traffic. Because most of the time when they pull in, their truck is sticking out on, on Parsons Road, or either they're in the middle lane where you turn. So, it impedes traffic tremendously. On West Main Street, that's a real narrow street. There are some potholes that have been in there because of the trucks and actually because of the weather also. But I have known that I've seen the trucks, and I've had several phone calls where they have come through and, at a rapid speed, and the people's houses are like shaking from where they're coming through. So, I would like to have something to stop this traffic from coming through that, that, that particular area, especially West Main Street. I know it's not much that we can definitely do about Parsons Road right now, because there is a business located, and it is a warehouse. But like I said, they do impede traffic. It's dangerous. You can't see around traffic. Traffic is blocked where you can't even get around- Traffic is blocked where you can't even get around these tractor-trailers, and if you do, it's like, you can't see to get around, 'cause you got, you have this truck in the middle lane, and you can imagine a tractor-trailer in the middle lane, and he's blocked. He's got both lanes blocked. So if the ongoing traffic coming this way, their lane is free. Can you imagine another car trying to get around to see? No, it's, it's, it's hard. It's hard, so, um...
Is there a traffic thing we can set up with Public Works now that she's gone?
It's not under her.
Oh, oh, is it somebody else's?
It's under, it's under Tom.
Tom, yeah, um...
Just to see her about axles or something like that?
Yeah, they can do counts, and I think they can do by axles too. I think they can break that down, um, under, yeah, yeah, we can do that. Um, and, and you said there's a warehouse over there?
There's a warehouse.
Allen Brothers?
Right on Parsons Road. And it's Allen Brothers Warehouse. It's been there for years, and I respect that business.
Is it not labeled? It's not labeled, is it?
No, it's not labeled. But I respect that business, it's been there for a while, it's not, but, but the only problem is, is the tractor-trailers coming.
Where on Parsons is that?
It's right beside, um, Village of Mitchell Pond.
Like up by, uh, on, uh...
Right across, right next to, um, Royal Farms.
Yeah, I know where you're going. That's what I thought you were talking about.
Yeah, uh-huh. And it's, and it's, it impedes traffic, and it's, and it's dangerous. And I'm looking one day just to see a horrible accident out there, because it's bad enough that the people speed up and down the road, but it's, it's, when they've got those tractor-trailers out there, and you can't see around them.
Wonder if we could also, I mean, it, it's probably best to do the traffic study first, but after that, I wonder if we can just, um, steer, uh, based on the number of axles? I mean, it's all city streets except for, and once you get to Pemberton, and, excuse me, once you get to Nanticoke, it's county, um, and S H A right away. You know, I wonder if we could steer trucks in that direction with signage? You know, no trucks over X number of axles, or no trucks over X gross vehicular weight in this direction, and make them all go. Now, there are some trucks that are still gonna go that way, Purdue, uh, Brew River, Cisco trucks.
The issue is, it's, it's kind of like a mixed area where there's residential, but there's also businesses.
Yeah, there's certain things that are absolutely gonna have to go down.
Well, I, now the, what is it, the, is it Coroza, Cloza? The, the, is oil?
Cato.
Cato.
Cato, Cato, but it's, they have different names for the trucks. They're fine.
Oh, correct.
They're, they're fine, 'cause they go through. They don't make a stop. But I'm just saying, for the ones who do the stopping and unloading of furniture and stuff, it's like you, it takes up a lot of space, and it takes up time, and people are like stuck in the middle of this traffic. And then like on West Main Street, the, that is a residential area.
Why, yeah, and I'm not sure why big trucks would go back there.
They are.
Other, no, I just, I'm wondering why.
I get a truck every other day that drives down Decatur Avenue.
See, you never know why these trucks go down, choose the right.
And at the end where it's, you know, where we closed it off, there was a truck that kind of got stuck, 'cause I guess he was expecting to go out on the thirteen, but...
And some of Purdue trucks that go through there, because I have watched.
I could see that.
Because once they, once they, the, the, um, residents started complaining, I started watch, monitoring some things. Then some of them are other tractor-trailers that are coming through there for no apparent reason. I'm not saying whether they got lost or detoured or whatever, but I'm like, oh my God, what are they doing in here? And I've actually seen where they have actually tore off lines, ripped off lines, power lines.
Yeah.
Because they're...
And I'm wondering if some of those too were trying to avoid Parsons while it was under construction?
No, this was before that.
Before that. Wonder if they were trying to avoid Parsons because it needed to go under construction?
Well, I should have avoided all the time.
Yeah, right?
No. It's been going on for quite a while, because the resident that I, the couple of the residents that I have spoken to on a regular basis
Yeah.
has said that they've been coming in, through there for like years.
Yeah.
But it's, it's to the point now where they're, they could feel, actually feel the house shake, 'cause they're coming at a rapid speed.
Okay.
They're just rolling right on through it. I'm like, how in the world do they roll through West Main Street when I'm, and my car won't even come through there like that? But they've actually tore the road up.
All right, so you're gonna work on that?
We'll, we'll definitely do, um, a traffic study on, and is there any value to doing one on Parsons? I mean, 'cause we know it's gonna be on Parsons. A tra- a traffic study is only gonna tell you, like, how many vehicles went.
Yeah. I, I'm not too much concerned about Parsons. I'm more concerned about the, the persons on, the residents on West Main Street.
Okay.
Yeah, because that is such a narrow road.
Yeah.
And the houses are so close together, and they're older houses too, so we have to, yeah.
So we'll start with that, see what the results are. Um, we'll either bring it back to another council meeting, if you wanna do it that way, or we'll just give it to you, however you wanna do it.
We can. Bring it back to another council meeting.
Okay.
Any other, uh, items for the good of the order? Mr. Heath? Okay, how's the humidity up there?
Um, it's not bad.
We're coming where you are at.
It's not bad.
All right. Uh, one last thing I got. I want to, uh, tomorrow is our mayor's birthday. I want Mr. Mayor a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
And enjoy your half-day off.
Yeah, right, twenty-seven.
Not quite.
So, uh, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
And many more.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, and with that, uh, we are adjourned.